We can get started this morning. We'll get our staff meeting underway. And we ought to start by saying that it's somebody's birthday today. Tanya Buckingham, happy birthday.
Ah.
Yeah. Somebody can sing. But you must, you're still young enough, you can still have birthdays. Some people like me, I, yeah, okay, good. Well, happy birthday. Commissioners, before we ask the manager for presentation, anybody got anything they want to say to begin with? All right, then, Mr. Manager, welcome back.
Thank you.
And have you got your cobwebs out? You ready to go?
I'm ready. Although it was 70 degrees where I came from, and walking off the plane, and that being 29 degrees, it was a little, it was a little cold. But, so Commissioners, today, we're going to talk to you about the purchasing card policy. It's kind of a reminder, for the last six months, I've stood up with Tom and the executive team at purchasing, or a policy review committee, basically a policy development committee. Because we're going through all of the policies that, you know, date back for, you know, probably there were some in the mid-'80s. We're basically going through and revamping. Tied to that, if you remember, you know, with the, earlier this year, the audit that we went through, there were certain things that we needed to tackle first, and this is one of them, that we're going to have Hope Hernandez brief to you today. And that's the purchasing card policy. And the reason why we're really front-loading this and presenting this to you now is because there are, there are certain things that we would like, and certain restrictions and controls that we would like to put in place almost immediately, to help us and to keep us in terms of what the audit team find in a better position for future, for the future. So without further ado, I'll let Hope kind of go through those, and in the end, we can certainly entertain questions that the Commissioners may have on this topic. Hope?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. As Mike had mentioned, the purchase, we are updating the purchasing card policy due to recommendations as part of our 2016 audit conducted by BKD. Four of the recommendations that came out as part of the audit were, one, to close purchasing cards that are being minimally used or not used at all; two, to review expenditures to make sure that all cardholders are following Charter 68 policies; three was to obtain Level 3 data from Bank of America and conduct periodic analysis for irregular transactions; and four was to require direct supervisors' approval on all transactions. So what the Division of Finance has done in response to this is, one, update our purchasing card policy, as well as we have closed 62 purchasing cards, either due to inactivity or the department or division heads coming to us and saying, "We'd like to close these certain cards." Also, we do an annual review on all cardholders to ensure what cards are being used and what are not, and get with the department heads on those. Second, as part of our monthly reconciliation process, we are making sure that cardholders are following Charter 68 and not spending over $10,000 on purchases or spreading those amongst cards. Third, the Division of Finance is obtaining the Level 3 data on a monthly basis, and we're looking for any irregular or fraudulent type of transactions. And then, fourth, in the updated P-card policy that we're bringing to your attention, we are requiring the direct supervisors approve all of their cardholders' transactions on a monthly basis and send those into the Division of Finance for review. The purpose of the purchasing card policy is to establish the responsibility and guidelines for expenses processed using the county purchasing cards. The scope of the purchasing card policy is applicable to all Sedgwick County government employees, including elected officials, divisions, departments, and the 18th Judicial District. It applies to all purchases made with a purchasing card regardless of the source of funds, complies with Sedgwick County purchasing resolutions, policies, and division procedures. And the accounting director, the purchasing director, the deputy chief financial officer, or the chief financial officer may grant limited exemptions and/or exceptions. The county maintains a purchasing card program that allows authorized individuals to make specific business-related purchases of eligible goods and services. The purchasing card is intended only for Sedgwick County government business transactions, and this program is designed to delegate authority and responsibility to purchase items directly to the departments. Finance is responsible for managing the purchasing card program, and then each department is responsible for managing its cardholders' accounts in compliance with policy and procedure. Unique controls have been developed for this program that do not exist in a traditional credit card environment. They ensure that the cards can be used only for specific purchases and within specific credit and transaction limits. Two important definitions that we wanted to highlight, that there's many definitions listed in the policy, but two of them that we wanted to highlight, first is cardholder, which is, a cardholder is an employee of Sedgwick County, the fire district, or the district court who has issued a purchasing card and who has authority to use it for Sedgwick County business. We also wanted to highlight direct supervisor, as this is a new definition in the policy. A direct supervisor is an individual whose job is to oversee and guide the worker activities of a group of other people. The eligible goods and services for purchase on the purchasing card, we've made a few changes to these. For travel-related purchases, which includes airfare, car rental, cab, lodging, mills, et cetera, preapproval from the division head is required before making those travel-related purchases on your purchasing card. Emergency purchases, these purchases need to be approved by the department or the division head, and this approval needs to be in writing and attached to the monthly reconciliation to ensure that we're following Charter 68 and that these are, in essence, emergency purchases. We are requiring itemized receipts for all fuel, and this would be for fuel that you're getting within the county, not for trial and travel or reimbursement purposes. For photocopying, photographic processing, or postage, we are requiring that we first utilize our print shop and our mailroom, as they offer many of the services that the USPS or FedEx offers. So we're asking, so we're requiring that cardholders reach out to the mailroom first or the print shop, and then get preapproval before they go and use an outside vendor. Subscriptions and memberships, preapproval from the division head is required here, so that we can make sure that we know, that each of the division head knows what memberships and what subscriptions that each of their cardholders are applying for and paying for. And now, we were requiring an attendee list for all Sedgwick County-sponsored events, and this includes trainings, conferences, classes, luncheons, seminars, local meeting expenses, catering, food for clients, residents, meetings, or trainings. So simply just attaching the attendee list would be sufficient for those areas. Detailed explanations and identification numbers are required for incidental client services and medical and client appointments, so some kind of identification number to identify if we needed to go back for an audit, to be able to pull up and verify that those costs are compliant. Witness and jury fees, networking supplies, undercover investigation, and other non-contract, non-reoccurring purchases costing less than $10,000 that you purchased through the phone or the internet. Any questions relating to whether a transaction needs to be made on a purchasing card, you would contact the purchasing director. Gift cards are no longer allowed to be purchased on the purchasing card. All gift cards must be purchased through the county PO process. The authority and responsibility for a purchasing card is, it begins with the Division of Finance's responsibility, it goes down to the division responsibility, and then to the cardholder responsibility. The Division of Finance's responsibility here is to develop and maintain the purchasing card reconciliation process, to monitor, alert, suspend, and/or revoke purchasing cards for inappropriate or illegal use, and to increase or decrease card spending limits for employee purchasing cards. The division's responsibility is the cardholder's direct supervisor shall review, approve, and submit all purchasing card transactions to Finance on a monthly basis, to distribute purchasing card information from the Division of Finance to all cardholders, and to notify the accounting director of suspected inappropriate or illegal cardholder use. The cardholder's responsibility is to review and agree to purchasing card policies on an annual basis, make eligible and appropriate business-like purchases within funds availability, to provide itemized receipts for all transactions, to present sales tax exemption form or cards for all purchases, and to tip a maximum of 20% for mills. If an automatic gratuity is applied to the check, no additional tip is allowed. And to keep the purchasing card safe and secure at all times. The consequences for misuse and fraud of the purchasing card, misuse does not get, the examples for misusing your purchasing card would be, the cardholders not give purchase documentation in a timely manner to ensure prompt payment, does not maintain adequate documentation for all purchases, uses multiple cards or transactions for one payment to circumvent the $10,000 spending limit, and/or does not follow the Sedgwick County policies and procedures. Fraud, then, is the purchasing card is intentionally used for personal transactions or purchasing items outside of the policy guideline restrictions, or the purchaser using the card is the individual to whom the card is not issued. The consequences for misuse and fraud, for fraud, the actions which may be taken are card suspension, card revocation, disciplinary action up to employment termination, personal financial responsibility for purchases, and/or legal action. The first offense for misuse is a written warning to the cardholder, the direct supervisor, and the division director, and a one-month card suspension. The second offense for misuse is card cancellation and privileges revoked, and then again, communication will be sent to the cardholder, the direct supervisor, and the division director. I know that was a lot of information, so does, do you have any questions pertaining to our updated proposed purchasing card policy?
My, my first question, does this take action by the BOCC, or is this just a policy that's, that's established administratively?
It will take action by the BOCC.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to put it in front of the BOCC, which is why we're wanting to get this in before the end of the year.
And when's it going to be on our agenda?
Next Wednesday.
Okay. On a, on a first offense, a one-month card suspension, how do our employees do business if they don't have the card and they need a card? Do they have to get somebody else to buy something?
Somebody within that section, department, office.
Okay. All right. And I had another question over here. What's an instance where we might buy gift cards?
We do see a lot of instances where gift cards are purchased on the purchasing card, and that would be for incentives for maybe like the healthy babies program, and things like that. So it's to give to Sedgwick County citizens as incentives, most often, is what I see.
Part of a regular program?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, we got briefed on this yesterday pretty thoroughly, or I did anyway. Are there any other, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, well, I think it's a good deal. I mean, I'm glad we're doing this, to review that, and clearly set a policy and clearly set the consequences, so appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner, that's all the topics that we wanted to bring in front of you today.
Okay. Commissioners, anything to bring up?
I have one more.
Okay.
I received a couple of emails in the last week, and I understand at least one of the Commissioners received one, and so I have copies of the bodies of those emails in this handout I handed to you, so you can see what I'm talking about. Here you go. Basically, what's going on, if I understand correctly, is there's, for cars that are basically being worked on, say in someone's garage, but they're inside the, inside the garage, and there are pieces, parts, not necessarily drivable, at least one of the people I talked with, their car's been disassembled for a couple of decades, I guess, and making minimal, minimal improvements to that, but they got this very large tax bill. I'm not sure if something's changed in our processes or whatever, but the one I got last night is concerning, because he's, I guess, he believes that he doesn't owe this, and if, he thinks he'll go through the appeal process, he would, he'd be successful, but in the meantime, he has to pay, they're saying he has to pay $800, even though he's going to protest this, and he thinks he's going to win, but right now, he doesn't have the money, and, so I guess I'm curious, is there a way to, first of all, is this, is this a new situation? And secondly, if someone feels like they're in this situation, is there a way for them to expedite or have some relief in the process while they're being, while they're protesting the tax bill?
People who own vehicles that are not tagged, the president's office is responsible for buying those each year, so we send them the property in a rendition, they're required to send that back. They don't send us any documentation to show that the property is not in the condition that it was years ago, and we would likely put them on based on CBD guidelines.
If the car was roadworthy, though, they would have to, they would have to tag it before they could drive it on the street, so if it's inside someone's garage and you can't see it, I mean, it may be, it may be a show car, but if they ever tagged the car, I mean, if they're, the car could, if it was a show car, my guess is your, the book's probably not at right value, anyway. You're trying to come up with a, I mean, I don't know how you do this, but.
Fair market value.
Fair market value, okay.
But shouldn't we, shouldn't the burden of proof be on us, first of all? I mean, we don't have any evidence that it's still not a junk, so we're going to tax them, but I guess, to this point, it has something changed that, well, all of a sudden, I got one, we got like three of them, it seems kind of unusual, never gotten one before. Are we doing something different, or?
You know, we're reading on our records to make sure that we have documented whenever we're not following the guide. So when we're not following the guide or the value, we should have some documentation to support that. When we don't, we reach out to them, say, "Please provide something," but many times they don't communicate with us.
Well, I guess I have a problem with changing someone's value. I mean, we just had this with a house. When the guy goes to the house and gave him a hard time, said they're going to appraise the garage as a second dwelling, if he didn't get what he wanted, they basically threatened the guy, the lady, and appraised it as a second dwelling, even though they didn't have the evidence that it should have been appraised as a second dwelling. Now, you fix it back, but I don't like this approach that we're taking, that it seems like we're kind of strong-armed with some people, but.
I think.
My particular guy, you had photographic evidence, and that had been a while, and nothing had changed, and to this point, it had been tagged, but, but the next question is, the guy's, I mean, how do we solve this as far as the guy has to pay $100, or, or, I mean, how can we do that? That's really.
That's treasurer's call, I believe, that things need to be made.
The taxes have to be paid, they're paid under protest, and it's going to impact the, the hipper tag, too, because of the latent personal property, and we flag them in the system, and they can't pay a car tag for the cars that do run.
But if he get, like, oh, man, you got documentation, and you change the value, right?
You'll have to.
It's already been changed?
No, it's an correction process.
Yeah, you'll have to, your correction error might funnel that back down, and then we'll have to send him another bill based on what the value that.
Okay, but if they, if they do the correction, then you can do another bill, and he wouldn't have to pay it under protest, is that right?
Yeah, but I don't remember if the corrections have to process, I, that's all the appraisers are.
I believe it's not, the commission to sign off on.
What commission? Oh, we have to sign off on it once, when, I see.
Well, the stories, in my opinion, are very concerning. If I put myself in the position of these taxpayers, I, one of them said he paid $7 last year, and this car's been in disassembly for more than 20 years. He hasn't made any progress on the car whatsoever, and I guess in the years past, he has supplied pictures or whatever. I don't think he understood the process. I understand you have a process, but he went from $7 to just under $400, and he has to pay it, even if he wants to protest this, he's got to pay that money, and all his money's going to be tied up, and I guess in, in the process, assuming he'll win this thing. I mean, if the car hasn't changed it at all, last year, he paid $7, this year's paid $400. So if he has to pay $400, you know, during Christmas time, to me, it seems like there ought to be some way for someone to, if this is the situation, I hate for someone to have $400 tied up in a, you know, for months and months on end, while we bureaucrats are trying to sort this thing out. To me, there ought to be a way for them not to have to pay that money. This other gentleman's, you know, his went up $1,500, if I understand correctly. I don't quite understand his email very well, but, so anyway, there's just, to me, to me, this is not a very common thing, but when it does happen, there ought to be a way for someone, again, they're not going to take, they're not going to title the vehicle, they're not going to tag the vehicle, because it's not roadworthy. It's in a garage, and this is total disassembly. And so, I don't know, I just, if they don't pay that, what's the consequences if they're not paying it? I mean, I'm not saying at home.
It looks like even the motor vehicle system, they won't be able to tag their road card.
What about if they?
It's the latent personal property tax, and the law won't allow it to provide you with a tag if you owe the latent personal property.
If they don't plan on tagging this in the next 40 years, then what happens to that vehicle?
If the appraiser continues to bill them at the current rate.
I guess my assumption, they would, they would go ahead and protest this, they would get corrected, and in the meantime, they don't have their money tied up. I'm just curious if that's not a reasonable answer. I don't have to tell them, and I feel, I feel bad about them, at least in one case, the guy doesn't have the money.
Well, I think the solution, I mean, right now, is to get a picture, send it to him, he'll send a correction, right? It'll come before us, and then she can reissue another one. That's how to fix these right now, but there's some concerns about how we should deal with these in the future, but so, do we know, where is the correction at, Mr. Manager? Does anyone know?
I think the next couple of meetings are going to.
Well, I'd like to expedite that, get it on there, so that he can.
Is there some way I can communicate to these folks, tell them to, to, "Don't do anything, we're working on a solution"? I mean, hey.
We'll get back with you.
Okay, I'd like to be able to answer them in the next day or so, but I think they're, they're worried about a bill they're not paying, and they're, anyway, so I'd just like to, I'd like to provide some peace to them as soon as possible, so, all right. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Anything else, Commissioners? I had a couple of things for, to get clarified a little bit. Susan Erlinwine sent us that stormwater management rating thing, and estimated costs and stuff like that, is that the work of the Stormwater Advisory Board?
It was a special committee looking at how to prioritize projects, and they've been doing sample, sample projects, and trying to come up with a good method of doing that, and that's what that's about.
Okay, it seemed like the total was $558 million or something like that. I mean, that's not a proposed list, that's just.
No.
Okay, and so that was just information for us?
Right.
Okay, all right, well, is that?
So there's a SMAP, and then there's a subcommittee of the SMAP that's, that is working on how to prioritize projects, so it's having separate meetings.
Okay, all right, thanks. And where are we in the, in the issue about the VA billing? Are we still chatting with those folks?
We are still chatting. In fact, we had a meeting with, there are multiple types of billing processes that the VA handles. Yesterday, we met with one of those to, to work through a process. Right now, the status is that we have individuals looking at literally every transaction in every year to verify whether payments have occurred on our side, and then we are transmitting information over to the VA to have them verify information on their side. We expect to have a pretty good progress update by the end of the month with a complete report reconciliation by mid-January.
Okay, and, but they're being cooperating?
They are cooperating. We've identified a number of improvements to the process, including monthly and quarterly visits and reports, and they have developed a database to manage their things that they will be sending us reports out of, and we had a chance to see it yesterday, and they're doing a really good job, they're making good progress.
Okay, so improvements in the process on our side or their side?
Mostly their side.
Okay.
But we have identified a couple ways that we can get information to them more easily through the X, but I think, so we'll be doing that as well, and that will be summarized in our report that we'll provide to the main, what was and what will be.
And that is by mid-January?
They may be early. We can have it sooner, but.
Well, I, I know you guys are good and all that, but I mean, I just, we shouldn't have to set up an accounting system for them. I mean, you've got your work to do here. I mean, that seems crazy, but I guess if that's what we have to do to get our money, but, okay.
Yeah, it's a national problem, so whatever we get, and whatever Lindsay produces in terms of fixes, then we'll have to make sure it gets to all the VAs.
Okay. Ask and answer, I guess, huh? All right. And we've got a big contest coming next week with the Battle of the Badges, and we're going to have more promotion on that. Are you going to give blood, Colonel Powell?
Absolutely, sir.
You going to give it to EMS?
Both arms, both legs. Maybe that's easier, too.
And are you supporting EMS?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, just encouragement for everybody that's so inclined to get involved in that. We haven't had any report back or conversation lately on, on the getting rid of the asbestos and the continued demolition of JRBR. Where are we on that?
Yeah, I'd send an update, actually, to Commissioner Dennis yesterday, after he asked. Right now, the inside of JRBR, they're doing salvaging, pulling stuff out, but the walls won't come down for another couple of weeks. We're, I've asked them, asked David to, asked them to give us some notice, so I can let the Commissioners know, so that first day when a wall comes down, so there are many of us that want to go out there and actually either take pictures, cry, or participate. You know, there's many different reactions there, so they're, they're going to give us a warning when that's going to happen, so we'll have a press event out there, I think, is what.
We would like to make sure we have an area for press, because we know it's been a great deal of interest in this project.
Okay. And were we going to do some of the work, though? David, were you going to?
We, we are going to fill in the lagoon, save about $30,000 with all those three maintenance. Folks are going to do, in fact, we're working out around Lake Apton right now, and we're prepared to move in there when that is ready to go.
Okay. All right. And then the other day, I asked about the usage on the gun locker, just to see how that was going, and I heard that it was used 18 times last month, but there's only two, two people using it so far that we know of.
Right. I'd send all the Commissioners a report, that basically, there are two lawyers that have, since we opened it, continuously used it. They were the main users of the gun lockers, and the 18 times was their use.
Okay, well, thanks for the information. Commissioners, anything else? All right, how about anybody around this table? Nobody. Elected folks?
Sheriff.
Nobody back here. Sheriff, the numbers are on your jail. Sheriff, the numbers are, on your jail are better than they were a couple of months ago by quite a bit. I mean, what's that mean?
Well, we're in the 190s, we've done it 20, so usually this time of year, we're 150, 160, we're still trending above or on my due December.
And the, the.
I don't think that's on the side of the weekend.
The news reports on the transition use of property, you satisfied with the way that came out so far? Have you seen them?
Yes, Colonel Dietzman, who had the NAB board meeting last night, there was some folks from the Neighborhood Association very concerned about that people in jail, I don't think they quite understood that it was a jail already, and so she explained the fact that, you know, people come and go from there, nonstop, for work release into their communities, whereas turning this into a, several pods of jail, those folks won't be coming to film. Plus, there's no visitation there, so there won't be any traffic in the area, and it gets, for the most part, people that are going to.
How?
Are the same folks that may be more eligible for work release, so charged with the same type of crime as the work release people were, and, you know, we have to hold for the state DUI arrestees or convicted individuals after the third conviction for sometimes two or three years at a pod, those are the type of folks that would be out there. So it's the lower classified, not in the low risk people that would be out there. And once that was explained, folks were very, you know, bold with the fact that the type of things that's potentially there, it was not the case, so.
Okay.
We're low last night.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Like, I guess tomorrow, we have a relatively short meeting, and we need to even expedite that if we can, so we will.
Also, kind of related to that, this afternoon, I'll walk the halls, Tom and I will, to talk about several ego-devo type of things going on out there.
Okay. If that's all, we'll be adjourned.